We're ready, I'll call this meeting to order. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day and the many rights that we have in this great country of ours. We ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom this evening, and that we treat all with dignity and respect, in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Adele敬敬， to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening, so thank you, planning commission members. Any announcements, Liam?
Yes, there are two announcements. The first is there's an S-Power meeting tomorrow night, Thursday, October 4th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Stevenson Ridge. And the second is the Crucible has extended an invitation to any planning commission member who wishes to go up and visit their site in Stafford. And if you would like to do so, just let me know, and we will make arrangements for you to take a visit.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements?
No, sir.
Next on the agenda is review and approval. We have two meetings we vote on. The first is minutes of September 5th, 2018. I trust everybody's had a chance to review any question or comments on the minutes. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
We move.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is the revote on the August 15th, 2018 minutes where there was an added statement, including Ms. Carter's recusal on the rezoning package. Excuse me, one minute here. For the Palmas Creek rezoning package. I trust everybody's had a chance to review those. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I abstain.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With one abstention, thank you very much. We'll move on to any unfinished business. I don't think we have any this evening. I'll move on to the next item on the agenda for the public hearing rezoning case, R-18-07.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is a request to rezone approximately 2.69 acres from Residential 1 to Residential 8 with proffers to allow for a maximum of 21 single-family attached units. Regency Crossing townhomes. The property is located on the east side of 5 Mile Road, extended approximately 500 feet north of Plank Road. Under the current zoning of R-1, the property may develop as one single-family detached unit. Staff is recommending approval with the proffer statement included in your packet. Here's a zoning map with the triangular-shaped parcel hatched in red. You'll see the property is adjacent to commercial-zoned properties to the south, including a self-storage facility and what is currently a vacant Rite Aid store. Across 5 Mile Road is vacant Residential 1 property. And immediately north is a R-8 in commercial-zone development known as Regency Park. This includes a high-density residential component known as Regency Park Villas and an office park component further north, which is not completely built out. Further north shaded in purple is the Barley Woods Age-Restricted Development, which is zoned Plan Development Housing 4. Per acre. Given the development patterns and the location, the comprehensive plan would be supportive of either a high-density residential development or a commercial development. To be hard and fast, but to serve as a guide. Here is an aerial of the property. Again, it is 2.69 acres. You can see the vacant Rite Aid store here at the corner, the self-storage facility, and then here is the Regency Park Villas. The subject property is currently vacant, and as you can see, is fairly heavily vegetated as well. Here is the applicant's generalized development plan. You'll first see that the development will have one point of access from 5 Mile Road Extended with a private road extending into the site. The proposed 21 townhome units are within three buildings, which will be three stories in height, except for the bank of buildings that's shaded in blue, they'll be two stories in height. This is one of the applicant's efforts made to maintain a consistent scale with the neighboring Regency Villas, which are one and a half stories. All units will have a garage and individual driveways, and there are 10 additional parking spaces provided on the site for overflow guest parking. Approximately 1.4 acres of open space will be provided, which is more than double the required amount by code. I've shaded in darker green here at the rear of the site. This is going to be a completely undisturbed area, part of the open space. It'll be preserved. Within the open space will be a tot lot, and that's highlighted here in yellow. Shaded in lighter green is a 10-foot buffer which will be provided along the property line between the proposed development and Regency Park Villas. The buffer will consist of existing vegetation and supplemented with one 8-foot evergreen planted every five feet. Six-foot solid brown vinyl fence will be installed along the property line between the proposed development and Regency Park Villas. This is highlighted in red, and extends along the property line and down this bank of buildings as well. The bank of buildings shaded in blue will also have six-foot privacy fences in each of the rear yards. The landscaping and fencing provided, again, are efforts made by the applicant to address concerns raised by the citizens at the community meeting. The applicant is also proffering architectural features which will mitigate the visual impact of this development from the right-of-way. As you approach the development from 5 Mile Road, you'd have a fairly good view of the rear of these units, so the applicant is proffering that the architectural features that will be on the front facade will also be on the side and the rear facade, so that'll help enhance that aesthetically a bit.
Is that the same, I'm sorry, again, was that the same for the buildings in blue as well?
No, sir, because there'll be so much landscaping and fencing there. This was really to mitigate that impact as, you know, vehicles pass or buys from 5 Mile Road that would have a straight view to the rear end of those units. Street trees are provided along the property's frontage, and additional evergreen plantings are provided on the southernmost corner, right here, to complete a solid screen of vegetation for proposed development and the existing commercial development to the south. As we mentioned, the development will have one point of access on 5 Mile Road Extended, which currently carries 1,233 average daily trips and operates at a level of Service B. The development will generate approximately 122 additional trips with 11 during the peak hour. This is not a significant enough amount of traffic to degrade the level of service.
Excuse me, you did a good job describing the blue and the yellow ones. What about the white ones? Can you go back to that last picture?
Well, the white ones will be three stories in height. The blue is designated to show that these would be two stories, and I had highlighted these just because of the architectural features.
Okay, thank you.
Taking into account back, the Barley Woods development is currently under construction. That includes 123 age-restricted units, and the Regency Park development has 84,000 square feet of office space that is approved but unbuilt. Full build-out of Barley Woods and the Regency Park office together will degrade the level of service for 5 Mile Road Extended from a level of Service B to a C. This is still consistent with county policy, which states that any roads within the primary development must be a minimum of a level of Service D. A comprehensive plan analysis was completed, and the proposal is consistent with all elements of the comprehensive plan, except public facilities, specifically fire, rescue, and emergency services, and parks and recreation. The applicant is proffering cash contributions to mitigate the development's impact on both of those facilities, consistent with proffer law. I'll note that in the staff report, we had pointed out that there was a capacity issue with Chancellor Middle School, and those were based on 2017 student enrollment numbers. And we just, yesterday, received updated numbers for the 2018 student enrollment, and there's no longer a capacity issue with Chancellor Middle. So the project now is consistent with the school's public facilities component as well. Regency Crossing will be a market-rate project identified by the applicant's narrative with an average sales price of $300,000. The applicant's fiscal impact analysis projects the development to generate over $25,000 annually at build-out. Staff completed a separate analysis utilizing the county's model. We have assumed assessed value of $244,520. This is an average of newer comparable townhome developments in the county. The county's model projected a negative impact of $33,836. And...
Excuse me, again.
Sure.
At $33,000, that means the taxpayer's picking that up?
That is...
Thank you.
That...
Thank you very much.
And was just, just gonna note that, you know, solely residential projects that may be considered affordable, it's not uncommon for them to have a projection of a negative fiscal impact considering the projected tax generation versus the service demand costs. The applicant has provided proffers with their request, first being that the property will be developed in conformance with the generalized development plan that we just presented. The development will be limited to 21 single-family attached units with no secondary uses allowed under the R-8 district. A homeowners' association will be established, and a declaration of conditions and covenants will be recorded. The HOA will be responsible for all common area fencing, landscaping, amenities, and there will be covenants with specific language related to dogs, limiting the number and size of dogs to no more than two, 30 pounds apiece, and it prohibits dogs from being left outside while the unit is unoccupied. That specific language related to the dogs is, again, the applicant's effort to address concerns raised at the community meeting. 1.4 acres of open space will be preserved. Again, that's more than double the required amount. A tot lot will be provided. A total cash contribution of $3,238 is provided to mitigate the project's impact on the parks and recreation facilities and the fire, rescue, and emergency services. Also, as we presented on the GDP, the applicant's proffering the architectural features from the front facade will be applied to the exterior walls on the side and the rear to limit that visual impact on that bank of buildings from 5 Mile Road Extended. Findings in favor of the request include that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the surrounding high-density residential development, and county-wide housing diversification goals. The proposal limits the impacts to the surrounding area with appropriately scaled buildings, landscaping, architectural features, and fencing, while providing more than double the amount of open space required by code. And the applicant has proffered cash contributions in order to mitigate the identified capital facility impacts, which are legally acceptable and consistent with proffer law. The finding against was that the county's model projected a negative fiscal impact. So again, staff is recommending approval, and that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Tim, when you came up with the negative of 33,000 and whatever you had there, but you made a statement that when the cost of a development, I guess, like this, that if it's below what?
The break-even point is around 365,000, $69,000, where the tax revenue generated offsets the demand of services, the cost of the services. So, you know, any price point below that is gonna cost, it's not generating revenue for the county, but it's a more affordable housing product.
Oh, okay. So that's where you're reaching with affordable housing. Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? We'll hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Payne with the law firm Herschler Flescher. We represent the applicant. Appreciate your time this evening. I've got a PowerPoint as well, and I appreciate staff's report and their analysis of our application. I think they covered a lot of the bases. I will fill in some gaps, answer some questions, and reinforce some points that are part of our application. As staff have noted, the property is one parcel consisting of about 2.69 acres, is located along 5 Mile Road Extended near the intersection of Route 3. The rezoning request is from an R-1 to an R-8 to allow for small residential development consisting of 21 single-family attached units. The purpose of the R-8 district is to provide single-family attached residential dwellings as a density not to exceed eight dwelling units. Not do apartments on this site, that this can only be single-family attached townhouses. The property is currently undeveloped, as you saw in the staff report. Construction is anticipated to begin if this is approved next year. We think that we can complete it in a couple of years, and there's no phasing anticipated. We will provide greater than 50% open space. About 52% of the site will be open space, which will help buffer from our neighbors. Again, the minimum requirement is just 25%. Surrounding property, surrounding area, again, I think this is important, taken into context for purposes of this application. We believe it is compatible with the existing uses in the area, and it's a good transition between those commercial uses that are along Route 3, because we're very close to that. In fact, we back up to a storage unit and a Rite Aid right there off Route 3. Just to our north is also a similarly-zoned residential property development called Regency Park, which includes 86 residential units. To the west is vacant property. Again, future land use for that property is commercial, and to the south and east is commercial as well. Here's an overview that staff showed of the current, this is today's current triangular piece right there, between the C2 in the front and then the R-8 behind us to the north on the east side of 5 Mile Road. That's the, that's the location of the site. You can see the buffering there and how it wedges in between that residential development to the north and the commercial to the south. Open space and buffering, this is really very important to our proposal, in my opinion. Open spaces will be used for natural areas, buffering, and stormwater management facility. Impacts on existing residents in vicinity will be mitigated through limiting, as you heard from the staff, the heights of the homes adjacent to our, further north on our site, adjacent to Regency Park Villas, to two stories versus three. There's also going to be plantings in a 25-foot setback between us and the adjoining property development to the north. That will include keeping in place about 10 feet of the natural vegetation and trees. There'll be plantings and landscaping, as staff have noted, also within that buffer, and a six-foot privacy fence will be along the property line to our north. Cultural resources and environmental, there are streams or RPAs on the site. The property does not have any cultural resources, including any Civil War-era works or cemeteries, and it's not located within your historic overlay district. Comp plan, we believe this project is consistent with the county's comp plan. Due to the location and the mix of surrounding uses, we believe this proposal acts as a proper transitional development between the commercial uses and the residential uses to the north, as I stated earlier. The proposed project furthers also multiple objectives for our comp plan, including achieving residential commercial tax rate goals, creating local jobs, supporting a diverse housing inventory. I know there was some discussion about affordable housing. The break-even point for homes in Spotsylvania County is $369,000. I assure you that that's not the majority of homes in Spotsylvania County. Commercial taxes obviously offset that. What's not included in the staff's fiscal analysis is personal property tax and tax and money that is spent from the folks who live there. So those are things we take into account, in addition to the fact that the price points that we're looking at are market points, not assessed value. So I think that's important to understand why there's a difference, why we're 25,000 plus and they're 33,000 negative, because they only look at residential real estate tax. And again, we believe this, this project does provide highest and best use. So future land use, it is in the commercial, but you'll see that with this proposal, we're going to be able to buffer the development that's to our north, which will be a good transitional piece from the commercial that's to our north. But here's an overview of what's there today. You'll see the storage facility just to our east, and then to the further south, there's a Rite Aid at the corner, which you're probably all familiar with. We're the triangular piece, wooded triangular piece right there in the middle between us and Regency Park. Here's the GDP, which was presented by staff. As you can see, to the north, the buffering, as I was, as I had stated, there's a 25-foot buffer. R-8, there's no buffer requirement. So typically, R-8 can be up against R-8. Here, we have actually added a 25-foot buffer. It'd be landscaping, keeping natural vegetation in. In addition to that, we're lowering the height of the townhouses so that we wouldn't have any impact on our, on our neighbors. We also have a six-foot privacy fence along the property line, and we've added a six-foot fence on the rear yards of all the homes there to the north. Fiscal benefits, just went through that. Average home sales would be 250,000 for the two stories, so we lost about 50,000 a unit by bringing it down a level. About 300,000 for the price points on the three-story. It would generate 36 jobs during construction, which are as important employment sector in our region, and also about 1.2 million employee earnings. At the end of the day, we're seeing a net positive of about 25,000. Transportation, access to the property will be provided from 5 Mile Road Extended. So what would the project look like if it was utilized as a commercial property? Did some analysis, what we could think we could fit on the site, what would be attractive from a market perspective? Daycare certainly would fit on the site, be attractive to that location, especially that close to Route 3. If you put a 10,000-square-foot daycare center there, you'd have 741 trips a day. During peak hours, you have 122 on AM and PM, 123. If we did retail, you'd have 443 trips per day with 68 AM and 27 PM. If you did medical, it'd be 361, and again, 24 AM, 36 PM. With our project, small infill townhouse project, 122 trips a day with nine only in the AM and 11 during the PM. So a significant, significant reduction in what the impact could be if it was zoned commercial. Schools, as staff have noted, is located in the Harrison Road Elementary, Transfer Middle, and Riverbend High School districts. Based on the county estimates, through the county estimates, again, we don't, we don't come up with these numbers. It would generate about almost six zero-point per dwelling unit. The project's 21 units would generate 12 school-age kids. So again, a very low impact on schools, and again, your staff had noted there is capacity for schools as well. Public safety, parks and rec. Fire and rescue station six, located about one and a half miles east of the site, will provide emergency services. The proposal will have minimal impact on fire and rescue facilities. Again, a very small project. The applicant will install and also construct a tot lot as part of its recreational facilities, and again, will have minimal impact on park facilities. And we've, and we've got a cash proffer addressing all of this. Staff have noted that proffers would be $154.19 per unit. We've also proffered architectural features regarding lots 1 through 7, as staff have noted, to ensure that those architectural features will be consistent as viewed from Route 3. The units on lots 13 through 21, again, will be two stories and have a six-foot privacy fences in the rear yard. And I just talked about the 25-foot setback for lots 13, 2 through 21 that adjoin Regency Park, again, with that 10-foot natural vegetation buffer, plus new plantings, and a six-foot tall privacy fence along the property line. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you. Anybody wish to speak this evening?
First signed up is Larry Lysett, followed by Andrea Stromer.
As you come to the podium, state your name and your voting district, and you will have three minutes. And there'll be a light on the podium. When that turns to yellow, you'll have one minute left. When it turns to red, I'd appreciate if you wrap up your comments.
My name is Larry Lysett, from 6258 Autumn Leaf Drive. This subdivision proposal is direct impact to my neighborhood. I currently live in the third building in Regency Park, and that would be directly behind my front door is going to be nine new neighbors, which directly impacts me. It could affect the value of my property. I also look at the fact that they're putting a buffer in there, which I think will be a minimum amount of impact to me, but I propose that this development is condensed too highly. If you do the mathematical numbers, they're saying about a certain percentage of the lot is, or the... You just take the square footage of each building and then divide it out by the property, you'll come up with those numbers, but you still have your driveways and your parking areas that are not considered in that. So that's, and the backyards that are fenced in is not an open area. So the impact of condensed neighbors is far exceeding, I think, what the mathematical numbers are. I also have been a resident of Spotsylvania County for 47 years. I've owned three different properties, and we decided to retire in Regency Park because of its neighborhood being close to town, and it's a nice, quiet area that we wanted to retire in. If this becomes a townhouse development, that is going to go away. You put two-story townhouses, and they are saying the price point is $250,000. I don't know if that's affordable housing or not, but I would say that a majority of those houses are going to be scooped up by investors and as rental property, and that's going to have a big impact on the county services. You know, you've got other developments that were in Spotsylvania County at one time that are now currently in the city of Fredericksburg, where they had the same impact that I think it will affect the county services greatly. And since it's showing the county's report that it's actually a negative impact to the county, it's going to cost us more taxpayer income than it's going to generate, I would recommend that it would be zoned commercial, at least the neighborhood would be quiet on the weekends. Thank you very much for your...
Andrea Stromer, followed by Jeff Bamford.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Stromer, and I live at 6238 Autumn Leaf Drive. When this project was first introduced to us, I was totally against it. My issues included a drop in water pressure with 21 housing units coming online, removing the trees between our development would make it easier for kids to come through onto our property, leaving us vulnerable to break-ins and vandalism. Removing the trees would also remove the noise buffer to Plank Road, and then having a three-story building looking down on our units was not a good idea for us either. There were also, at that time, no restrictions on the size or number of dogs per unit, and having dogs left on the backyard patios barking all day is not a good idea either. When Mr. Garrison heard our many concerns, he promised to start addressing them, but many residents signed a petition against the proposal, not believing that anything would change, and our little community would be in a bad situation if this development was approved. But Mr. Garrison was true to his word. The following are the changes he presented to us that addressed our concerns. First, he addressed the water pressure issue and assured us that our pressure would not be affected, but actually be improved by having water lines coming into our development from two directions. Next, the trees. Presently, there is a nice, high buffer of trees separating our developments, but Mr. Garrison stated that he will not clearcut these trees. Garrison stated that he will not clearcut these trees, but would rather work with a landscaper to carefully select the trees that are necessary to be removed, and then plant additional trees to fill in the areas that are in need. This would also preserve our noise barrier. Then, he proposed constructing a six-foot brown-colored fence that will blend in with the trees and be placed within the tree line, but not in a straight line. What he proposes is to weave the fence in between the trees. This fence then addresses our concerns with children coming through into our neighborhood and also help with the noise from Route Three. The one main thing is that he plans, as was mentioned before, to leave the property on the east end that will remain actually an open space, which is ideal. Then, he lowered the height of the building directly adjacent to our property from three stories to two stories, even though this means that he will lose money on each unit in the building by lowering to two stories. This removed the issue of having that third floor looking down on our community. Mr. Garrison said that this will be a condominium community with association rules and regulations, and that he will be, and he will serve on the board of directors. He also indicated that he will ensure that, as was mentioned before, the number and size of the dogs for each unit will be limited. The dogs will not be allowed to be left alone outside, and also that boats and outdoor water equipment will not be allowed to be parked in the driveways. I can only hope that the board realizes the great link that Mr. Garrison has come to address all the issues and concerns of our residents.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff Bamford, followed by Gordon Grimsley.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Bamford, and my wife and I live at, excuse me, sixty-two ninety-four Autumn Leaf Drive in Regency Park Villas. And we see, we, from our house, we look right across at where the new townhomes would go. And I want to say right off the bat that my wife and I are one-hundred percent behind the new project, and we highly, we certainly recommend that you rezone the property and that approve the townhome construction as they are presented. First of all, several reasons for our support of the project. First of all, we know that something's going to go in there. We moved into our current home about four years ago, and we knew that a piece of property sitting right there isn't going to stay vacant forever. So we knew that something would go in there, and we prefer to have a beat, well-maintained townhome community to some of the other possibilities. Secondly, the townhomes would be a very, an excellent improvement to the community. We believe that Mr. Garrison has laid out a well-thought-out, well-defined plan as to how he's going to set up these townhomes or build these townhomes. Secondly, as Andrea said, he has made changes and improvements to the plan that were put in as a result of our comments or people's comments from Regency Park. So we certainly know that he's tried to work with us and make it as good as it possibly could be. The townhomes, we feel, although a number of people have said that the townhomes will lower the property values, we feel that the townhomes, my wife and I, feel the townhomes would raise the property values. If nothing else, it would raise the property values to have a well-built, good section in there would certainly raise the values. Lastly, we've attended all of the meetings where people from Regency Park Villas, where we live, could come, and at none of these meetings were more than, say, twenty-five percent at the most of the residences represented. So there's really not a groundswell of opposition to this project. So for these and other reasons, again, want to repeat what I said. My wife and I are one-hundred percent behind the rezoning and building and approving of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Gordon Grimsley, and I live at Regency Park Villas. I am a retired home builder, and I have looked at this plot or this two-point-six-nine acres of land, and I have calculated everywhere I could. When you take off the corners, the three corners, you end up with about one-point-eight-seven acres to build on, no matter what these people say. And if you can, you know, you cram this, these three buildings and twenty-one units onto that, it's going to be a very narrow driveway, and the... And I assume that people will probably end up parking on the street or on the, on five-mile road extension. And also, something was said about the number of people that are against this, this project. We did, we took petitions, and I believe we had sixty-some people signed. We had six or seven people against it, but would not sign a petition for anything. So we're probably looking at about seventy people, seventy of the units out of the eighty, eighty-six. So that's a very high number of people don't really want this thing. My whole problem is that this thing is just, it's going to be crammed in there very tight. I think it's going to look like a, like a project, a slum project that you'd find in New York when the, all the immigrants were coming over from Europe, where they were living with narrow streets and all that. I am totally against building this thing. I'm asking you to vote against it. Thank you.
That's all that signed up.
My apologies. Anybody else that wished to speak to this application? All right. Thank you very much. I'll close up the part of this if the applicant wishes to address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other members of the Planning Commission, I'll be brief. As always, we respect, obviously, the opinion of our neighbors. It's one reason why we have community meetings and outreach. Mr. Garrison, I know, has worked very hard with the neighborhood to address their issues and concerns, and I think he's done so in a very positive way. I assure you, this will be a quality project. Also has a very, very positive reputation in this community to build positive projects, to be quality projects. We think it will add value to the community. It will also play a significant role in buffering the community from heavier commercial uses and commercial uses that are planned for that area. As I had shown in our slide, if you just look at the density analysis between what could go there commercial versus what we're doing, I think clearly what we're providing is a very low-dense infield project that will help benefit our neighbors. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and again, I appreciate your time this evening.
Mr. Chairman. Charlie, is there, is there any data or information out there? If these do become rentals, would there be any more strain on public safety? Is there anything out there that show that it would be, despite them being rental property?
No, sir. I mean, one, at the price points we're at, it's going to be very difficult for investors to come in and simply buy a bunch of them up and then rent them out. I mean, those days are kind of gone because the financing is not as easy as it used to be. Secondly, it's not good for us in selling townhouses in that development if they are rentals, so we have absolutely no incentive or desire for that to happen, so we're going to encourage ownership. There's also an HOA, and it'll be covered as the restrictions are run with this property to ensure that the properties stay of high quality and value. But you can only fit with so many people and so many bedrooms. So the numbers, you know, that you're asking about whether they're school-age kids or whether they have an impact on parks and services or emergency services, that doesn't change just because it's a townhouse. There are, you know, there are examples in the region of some of the older developments that have not progressed or been redeveloped, where there's some impacts. But quite honestly, new developments like this, townhouse new developments like this are for first-time homebuyers who come in, they have either young families or just got married, and this is a, this is something that gives them an opportunity to live in a quality property. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Carter.
Explain to me again about the buffering. I am concerned about the neighborhood of, I'd like to see them buffered from high traffic in the Route Three area and what it brings. So could you explain that, how that they will be protected?
Right. So you probably saw on the slide where we're kind of wedged in between them and the commercial uses to the south. And as part of that process, when we were at the community meeting and heard the concerns about buffering and noise and what impact that may have and how much they enjoyed the trees, we went back, took another look at what we could do. If you see the commercial property, the storage facility that backs up to that development, you'll see that that's about twenty-five feet buffering just for the commercial piece. Under R eight, we're not required to buffer. But what we did was, we went in and said, you know what? We're going to buffer this, we're going to keep the tree lines in place, we're going to add some landscaping, we're going to put up a fence, and then we're going to shrink the prop, the height of the properties that are adjoining to the north so that they're not, they're not looking down on the Villas, that they are lower, so that noise will be mitigated, be reduced. And then we're going to put six-foot fences up in the rears of those yards to make sure. We even went as far to reduce the size of the dogs, when dogs or pets could be outside, et cetera, just to ensure that we mitigate those impacts.
Now, the buffering and the fence and whatever, the upkeep is very important, you know, in neighborhoods, and to always keep them neat, nice, clean, painted, and the trees not one dying here and another one up. Will that be in the homeowner's covenant as you know of?
Yes, ma'am. So we'll create restrictive covenants that will have to be acquired, obviously, for onsite properties, and the HOA will also have to maintain the open space areas, which, as we have stated, is over fifty-two percent on this site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this application? I will take a motion on this app.
Yes. Well, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to satisfy the homeowners. I think you've done a really good job. I think it's a good project, but I can't support a project that's going to cost the rest of us three-three thousand dollars a year. I understand your concept that some other project will come along and make all this even, but that's smoke to me. I'm sorry I have to move to deny applicant's request.
Is there a second on the motion? Hearing no second. The motion does not move forward. I will take another motion on the application. I will, I will move to approve the application where the condition's noted. Do I have a second on it?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. You have a work session.
Good evening. Tonight's work session is focused on a specific element of the comprehensive plan update. As you know, we're in the early process of going through, reviewing the public facilities sections of the comprehensive plan, as well as a few other sections at the moment. Tried to update the 2013 comprehensive plan for its five-year update cycle. Again, tonight's focus will be the solid waste portion of the public facility element specifically. In attendance this evening, we also have Ben Love Day, Director of Public Works for Spotsylvania County, and he is sitting in the back in case you have any technical or operational detail type of questions regarding solid waste. So the draft that we provide you in a red-line strike-through format, as well as a clean format, was composed with the assistance of Spotsylvania County Solid Waste Staff. They're an integral part of this. Solid waste tends to be a specialized kind of niche operation within the county that tends to require that sort of impact and input to make sure we get it drafted correctly. As an overview of the amendments that are proposed this evening, we have an expansion upon the details of services offered. In review of the 2013 language, we found that it was fairly basic and lacking a lot of detail in terms of actually what solid waste does and offers for the county. So we expanded background information to describe what types of refuse are handled by the county, how it's recycling, an educational component as well for the public at large on the types of refuse, how it's handled, and the type of tonnage that is actually accepted at our convenience sites and the landfill. We've also updated references to applicable studies and plans. There's a solid waste management plan that's a big part of this update, as well as bio solids management plan. These plans are updated over time, and they have to be kept updated as they're referenced in the document. We've updated the collection and recycling data to current figures, and I will go through those updates with you in the following slides. There have been some fairly notable changes since the 2013 plan. We've enhanced accessibility to complementary resources and information. Basically, what I'm referencing here is, for instance, I referenced the solid waste management plan. This is an in-house document by the solid waste staff and the bio solids management plan. What we're trying to do is become more interactive and have more transparency and easier access to these documents. So within the document, you'll see, you know, you can find this resource here. We've included hyperlinks so that people reviewing the comprehensive plan can simply click on the link and launch into that additional resource that is backup material for the comprehensive plan language. So again, this promotes easier access and awareness in educating the public as well. We've updated landfill capacity reporting. This actually changes over time with new efficiencies in landfill operations, as well as changes as how much tonnage is actually coming to the landfill. We've acknowledged service areas covered with level of service criteria that we have. They're geographically based for convenience sites, and we've also noted any observed areas outside of the standard buffer areas. Like I said, their location criteria is specific, and any gap areas for convenience sites or anything outside of a five-mile radius, and I could tell you for sure, there's only three right now in the county. They're very small in all instances, those convenience sites that are outside of the five-mile, five-mile service radius are within a mile of that, and they tend to be very low-populated areas. We've also updated short- and long-term goals for the upcoming planning period. Again, this is driven primarily by the solid waste staff on that. So looking at solid waste generation...
Excuse me.
Yes, no problem.
On this revised short-term goal?
Sure.
You've got an item here that says update tipping fees and disposal of select items with current market rates. What does that mean?
Okay. I will defer the specifics to the solid waste staff, but basically what's happened is there's a cost to dump at the landfill, and historically, our fees were out of whack with the market, and what we had was locally sourced garbage, or refuse was being collected by commercial haulers and hauled outside of the county to be dumped elsewhere because it was cheaper to do so. The county amended the tipping fees. I don't recall the year, I'd have to refer to solid waste, and became more competitive with the market, and we've actually seen an increase in locally sourced refuse being landfilled within the county itself.
So what you're talking about, these tipping fees are commercial units other than the Spotsylvania County or the residents? You're talking about commercially operated disposals?
These are commercially operated disposals. This is where we've actually seen a fairly large increase in solid waste going to the landfill as a result of becoming more market-appropriate. So the, the goal here with the short-term goal, and we're kind of skipping ahead a little bit, but, is to try to keep maintenance of the market so we don't become outdated with our tipping fees, and again, end up in a situation where our landfill isn't getting, frankly, the volumes that it needs to self-sustain. I did ask the question of solid waste staff. I said, is it really good to have more refuse going into our landfill? Because in theory, you're speeding up the rate at which you're filling that landfill, and you'll need another one. However, from solid waste standpoint, this was viewed as a positive for economies of scale purposes, to support their operation and try to become more and more self-sustaining, they actually need more business. So that's kind of the, the give or take on this, and I will defer to solid waste if they'd like to further elaborate on that question.
Thank you.
We need more business. Are you talking about out-of-county businesses? Are the businesses that are in the county?
This, this is specific to solid waste generated within the county and commercial haulers taking solid waste generated within the county and putting it in our own landfill. The county has a policy that the landfill only accept locally, Spotsylvania County-sourced refuse. So instead of the refuse being collected and taken out of county to some other landfill, because it's more market competitive, it's now coming to the, to the county. And on this next slide, if we go to bullet point three, the waste stream actually has increased from 40,000 tons annually back in 2013 to 128,000 tons between, in present day. So we've seen a notable increase here. There's a couple factors for that. One of them, raised by solid waste, was the tipping fee change. The other ones, obviously, has to do with increasing population, is increasing refuse. More economic activity, more building, there's more commercial construction waste and landscape waste. So those are all also factors to be considered as, as you look at that figure.
So we have nothing that's coming in from other localities or jurisdictions or state?
No, and I will let solid waste confirm that for me.
I think Ben's going to answer something, honey. I mean, sir.
Good evening. Yes, Spotsylvania County does not import any waste from outside the county. So you're not looking at Stafford County, Fredericksburg. You're not looking at New York City trash. You're looking at the waste generated within Spotsylvania County. And what planning is discussing about in terms of tip rates, you know, basically, it's, you know, kind of letting business take care of itself in the market conditions. And when we made our rates more competitive, that waste that was being generated within Spotsylvania County that was going to other facilities was being then redirected to us because we were market rate competitive.
What other facilities are you speaking of when you say other facilities?
Basically, up until the time that the tipping fees were altered, we were looking at the majority of the waste being shipped to Richmond for landfilling facilities in Richmond, the King George Facility. The entire 95 corridor has a, a surplus, you might say, of landfill capacity. And, you know, it's pretty, pretty competitive market. So they go wherever the, that cheapest fee is.
So we can not see it all come through Spotsylvania County?
Yeah, the board could at one point choose to alter the tip rate if they wanted to do so and be not as market competitive, but you would see a loss of revenue for that. Generally, we can, we can provide the planning commission five years of data, but generally, right now, after the tip change, the revenue streams to landfill facilities between $1 to $2 million a year. Compared to prior to the tip rate change, it was a little over $100,000 a year. It's kind of a, kind of a combination. You kind of look at it whether or not, you know, that extra revenue is worth the, the operational costs associated with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, the county code specifies that only waste that is both discarded and collected within the county limits may be disposed of at County Livingston Landfill. The Livingston Landfill is estimated to have remaining capacity that exceeds 50 years. I've seen a variety of estimates, 65 and 70 years seems to be a nice sweet spot. Again, this really does depend on the amount of refuse entering the landfill, the recycling rate, and, you know, whether there's new, new capacity that can actually be added. There are some, there are some concepts that, that solid waste staff are looking at presently to possibly build in new capacity of the existing landfill. The waste stream, like I said, did increase from 40,000 tons annually to 128,000 tons between 2013 and present day. And I went over those factors that, that have contributed to that. Compost tonnage has also increased from 23,000 tons to 30,000 tons annually between that period. So population growth, increased economic activity, and shift of local commercial hauling away from other disposal sites, the county landfill have contributed to the increased volumes. County manages 13 convenience centers for household waste and recycling collection, and has set a five-mile level of service radius for each general, for each. And that generally covers the entire county, but for three small slivers within the county. County recycling rate is estimated to range from 31% to 42%, and are above the state-mandated 25%. Single-stream recycling containers available at each convenience site. Single-stream recycling includes mixed paper, plastics, cardboard, aluminum, and glass. In addition to single-stream containers, the county also offers opportunities to recycle metal, used motor oil, antifreeze, batteries, appliances, brush and yard waste. And the county also offers hazardous household waste collection twice a year for residential disposal of chemicals, toxic waste, or hazardous liquid materials. And this collection effort is accomplished by a third-party contract. The small areas that I referenced prior regarding the convenience sites, like I said, they tend to be in low-population areas, and they are in all instance within one mile of that five-mile service area of circle to the nearest convenience center site. One of the locations is down near Lake Yanna and Route 208 where it crosses into Louisa County. Another one is in the Spotswood Furnace Road area, and the last is in southeast Spotsy, Spotsylvania County in proximity to Smith Road. So getting to the revised short-term goals, keeping in mind that the comprehensive plan, we update it every five years. It is a 20-year document. It has a 20-year lookout period. In the short term, just going over some of the goals that we've had suggested by solid waste staff, would be to adopt a strategy that enables solid waste staff to effectively identify residents of Spotsylvania County using convenience sites for residential use. The goal here is obviously that Spotsylvania County residents use Spotsylvania convenience sites. They're not coming from out of the county somewhere. And that's been identified as, 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 as an issue within the convenience sites that they're looking to address. So that's a strategy that we'd like going forward in the short term. Secondly, to adopt a policy that restricts commercial disposal to a select number of disposal sites. I will use this as an example. The county has recently decided to limit the ability to safely handle and store high volumes at the Harrison Road Convenience Center, that commercial brush, leaf, landscape, and debris collectibles be suspended at that location because of inability to handle. So that's one of the reasons that solid waste is currently looking at trying to limit to the most appropriate facility for commercial disposal. And I would, if, if the planning commission is interested in additional information on that, that particular issue, I'll be happy to defer on solid waste on that one. Again, I think we've already addressed the update to tipping fees, just to make sure that they're, they're up to date with current market conditions, to evaluate strategies to make brush and yard waste recycling operations sustainable in cooperation with the county's composting facility, and to continue to implement goals of the solid waste management plan that is incorporated by reference within the comp plan. Lastly, in the short-range goals, to enhance data collection on expected refuse and recycling collections resulting from private commercial establishments. One of the deficits that was identified within the solid waste management plan was that data wasn't absolute, there wasn't a high confidence in, in the actual volume of commercial waste being generated. One of the things the planning department has as part of the site plan review process, and it also requires in rezonings and special use permits, is a solid waste stream worksheet and a solid waste statement, which basically allows upfront the county to collect estimated trash generation data before a project actually comes online. So it's very valuable in estimating private commercial establishment trash generations. Unfortunately, at this time, there has not been a really good conveyance of that information or, or means to take that sheet and, and track that within the solid waste staff. So that's one option that they can pursue. It's something that we have to certainly look at to try to make those numbers more beneficial to them. On the long-range side of things, these are probably out in your 10- to 20-year period, a little bit longer range on it. Although I would say the solid waste management plan is going to be in, in review and update, probably in shorter order than that. But we have to update all these plans just to make sure they're up to date. So we'd have a goal to update the 2015 solid waste management plan, consistent with the Code of Virginia, to update applicable chapters of the comprehensive plan upon completion of the 2020 solid waste management plan, considering any future needs, opportunities, or recommendations that apply. This really applies for a long-term goal, simply because the 2020 solid waste management plan then would project out into the future for, for that plan's purposes. Thirdly, to monitor recycling industry trends and markets on an international and national level, to educate recycling programs as the industry grows and changes, and to continue to build partnerships with commercial recycling businesses. Also, to continue developing sustainable solutions for bio solids, yard waste, and brush recycling, and to evaluate the benefits of managing the solid waste division as an enterprise fund, basically operating it as if it was a sustaining, sustainable business that offsets its own costs. So that is something solid waste is looking into, to try to be as efficient and cost-effective as possible. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
I think your last point is an excellent point, and I'm glad to hear that. I will offer this. As I travel around to the different convenience facilities that we have, it's very well-run. The attendants are most helpful, and it's one of the things I look forward to doing on Saturday mornings, is going to the local convenience center and chatting with the attendant. It seems to me they are in the know on just about everything in this county, so.
Good for you.
And they're neat and well-run, so great job, great job on that. I don't have any specific comments, but-
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Carter.
The commercial business that are collections, they have, I think some of them have their own site that they take their trash to. Am I correct? Are they all going to come to us?
The commercial haulers who operate in the county, some of the big ones are county waste. There's another one that's for public services. There are two local, what they call transfer stations, that they'll actually collect the waste and then bring it back to that centralized location and then haul it to the final destination. The county waste facility is located in Spotsylvania County, and then the republic one is actually located in the city of Fredericksburg.
You can go look at that one, Mr. Newhouse.
I will.
Yes. Okay. I'll just use county waste as an example, okay? So they pick up trash everywhere and whatever. The county at our landfill, we have specifications that we have to meet, and we should meet from state, and you have to carry that out. Who does it at the other landfills for the commercial?
The, they're actually in, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, Land Protection Division is actually responsible for all that permitting. So anything that goes on in their transfer stations is actually under purview of the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. So they go through inspections, they go through permitting that's required, and you have to meet all the same guidelines and requirements that we do as part of our operations.
But we are not responsible for those inspections?
No, ma'am. We are not responsible for inspecting those private facilities. That falls upon the state to do.
I guess you're going to laugh at this one, and I think everybody else hopes for it. What do you do with old tires besides throw them on the side of the road?
Old tires are a, basically, they're kind of a curse. They're definitely an expensive thing to handle, but we do take them at the Livingston Landfill and Chancery Avenue Center. You've got to deal with them somehow. We spend anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 a year managing those tires. And, you know, the kind of thought is, you know, if you don't provide an easy way to dispose of them, then that's what they'll end up doing, is end up throwing them on the side of the road or on a, on a dump site somewhere randomly in the country. So basically, what we do is collect those tires, and then we would call lace them. Basically, we stack them inside of large semi-trailers, and then they're sent off to a tire recycler, and then we're actually able to take that tonnage and use it in our recycling computations each year.
Oh, I'm glad to know that, because someone said, there's no recycling for tires. Well, evidently so, but they're sent off to do that.
Yeah, they're sent off to be recycled or used. There's some that are shredded and used for beneficial use, like reuse of drainage materials and different engineering-type materials. So yes, they're either recycled or reused, depending upon the market conditions.
At our site, do you only take four tires? At a, if somebody comes in, you'll only take four?
Right now, the way that we have operated has been basically a bit of an honor system. You have to, you're limited up to about six tires per day. And if there's a question about whether or not, you know, you're a commercial versus a residential, then the attendant's supposed to write down, you take your information, and then we kind of do a little further evaluation. It is difficult to basically separate who is a commercial tire disposal versus a residential tire disposal. And that's something we're looking at actually as a potential code revision to solidify how often and how much you can actually bring to any of the facilities for tires specifically. But once again, it's kind of a, it is on a dangerous slope. It is to a certain extent, if you make it too hard, then we end up picking it up on the side of the road with the litter techs and litter technicians versus just taking them.
Absolutely.
It's, it's a difficult balance to strike.
But I, I think that, and I was looking about, I mean, the reason I was asking also is I was thinking about, okay, if we can get some funding back from these tires that can be recycled, but when they, when you all load them on these tractor and trailers or whatever, we don't get anything out of it. We have to pay them to take it?
That is correct. Yeah, you have to pay to get rid of, they are recycled and reused, but you have to pay for those items to be processed. So when we accept the tires in, you know, we're paying for the disposal of those tires.
They should be paying us. I'll have to work on that one.
We definitely are on board with looking at some potential code revisions.
Commercial, commercial pays us, though, to bring them to the landfill.
Commercial does pay us, and there is a fee. I would have, I wouldn't want to quote it. I'd rather give it to you, to you actually in writing what the code section is. It's a certain fee for passenger car tires, it's a certain fee for truck tires, and that's a combination of heavy equipment tires. So that's another section we're looking at is for commercial disposal of a certain tires. That needs to be adjusted because a heavy equipment tire, which you imagine like in a, a big old front loader, a big old dump truck, or, or, you know, tires that are probably, you know, three to four feet tall, I mean, those can cost $1,500 a piece to get rid of. And then the truck tires themselves, you know, those, we're only limited to so many per trailer before they start charging us per truck tire that's placed in there. So, so in terms of overall, I do believe that there is some strengthening that should be done in the code, you know, as part of basically overall tire program management in the county.
Thank you so much.
Yep, no problem.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're up next, one minute. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, we're going to review the MU ordinance and touch on approved MU projects, discuss concerns with the current MU ordinance, and touch on some provisions of the MU ordinance that we can possibly amend. My, my presentation is going to be brief, so we can have some discussion at the end. And I will say from the outset that for the public's sake, I'm going to go through kind of our current MU ordinance, so everyone has a good understanding of kind of where we're starting from. So the mixed-use ordinance was adopted in September of 2012 with the purpose and intent to provide a flexible approach to development. The idea is that the street network creates good internal circulation, has connectivity of pedestrian networks, reduces front and side yard buildings, makes use neighborhoods, will include a mix of housing types, and they would respect the characteristic of the surrounding neighborhoods. There are five categories that range in intensity, and as the numbers ascend, the intensity increases. So you start with MU, MU1 up to MU5, which is the most intense MU category. In an effort to achieve a physical form that comports with the purpose and intent of the district, the ordinance has development standards to guide the physical makeup of the project. Depending on the MU district, this includes building types, lot area widths, setbacks, building heights, build-to zones, and open space. In addition to the ordinance, it also sets out parking calculations for specific uses- In addition to the ordinance, it also sets out parking calculations for specific uses, street types, block length, and uses, and special uses for each sub-district. As I noted, the ordinance was approved in 2012, and so far, we have these mixed-use projects that have been approved, Palmer's Creek being the most recent. We have one MU project that is in the process right now, is it a proposal for an apartment complex with commercial and currently has no commitment to the phasing of the commercial. Concerns with the current ordinance, there are several items with the current version of the ordinance that we have concerns about. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are items that we have highlighted for tonight. If there's something that we don't touch on tonight, please feel free to let us know, and we will include it for further discussions. So they are, as you see, consistent with the code of Virginia, limited or no commitment to commercial development, no density limitations, limited detail on GDPs, and last, language clarity, and alternatives to the MU district.
Leon, I didn't interrupt you just on this, while you're there. On the, on number two there, on the limited to or no commitment to commercial development. My concern is, is that when we, when we have these projects, and they're mixed-use like this, the developer comes in and puts up, we, let's say, we, you got to have three thousand square feet of commercial development. They, they build the building and don't put anything in it, and then can continue on with the, the rest of the development. Am I correct? Nat?
Well, if there was a stringent requirement that those buildings be constructed at some early point in the project, but right now, most of our projects have triggers that allow those commercial components to be built later in the project.
Right, but, but they don't have to be occupied. They just have to be built. Am I correct? So is it legal for us to, improper for us to impose something that, on these commercial developments, that they have to be occupied before they can continue on?
Well, I won't address the legal part, but let me go back to the beginning of the intent of the ordinance. When this ordinance was adopted, what we heard from the development community was that allowing the commercial development to come later into the projects would allow them the flexibility and would prevent them from building buildings that would remain vacant if there wasn't, if the market didn't dictate a commercial use.
I understand that, but in essence, we're, the taxpayers are actually losing money, the county's losing money while they're sitting there vacant, because we're not gaining money of sales tax or any, any other business tax from that business, just empty buildings sitting there.
That is correct.
So that is to benefit, that, if I was a developer, that would benefit me, but I don't think it's the county in whole that that's a benefit.
That the buildings remain vacant?
Mm-hmm.
No, is that correct?
Well, we have no, we have no restriction says that they got to have, they've got to be occupied within a certain time.
Currently, we don't.
Is it possible for us to do that?
Well, if you let me go through my presentation, I will cover some of that.
Okay, let's just, don't forget that, because that's an important thing to me.
Don't forget it.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
The code of Virginia, excuse me, defines mixed-use as a project with two or more uses. Our ordinance does not define it, and is not explicit that MU projects have to have two types of uses. The court, the current ordinance needs to be updated so that it is clear and consistent with the code of Virginia. So, limited or no commitment to commercial. There have been concerns, as you just raised, about MU projects having been approved. To date, the approved projects that are being constructed have started with the residential component. The projects on the left each have a commitment or a trigger for a commercial component, but have yet to hit those triggers, and the projects on the left were approved with no phasing. And so, kind of to your point, Mr. Smith, take, take Jackson Village, for example. There's, they can build seven hundred and fifty units of residential development before they have to build twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. So in essence, what happens if, if, when they get to seven fifty-one, they have to have twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial space on the property?
Unoccupied?
No, it's not occupied.
So, so my, my point is, is that, once they hit that, they, they build that building, they build that square footage, and then they continue on with the development. So they put more houses, or townhouses, or whatever. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Without having to make them be functional, buil- building there, but no, no, no business in it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Leon, to piggyback on what he just said, once they've built these commercial builders, does that not raise that piece of property's value?
Oh, it does, yeah, they will pay real estate taxes.
So the taxes on the property would be the same whether they've got people in them or not? What we're missing is the sales tax and the other taxes that go along with that?
That is correct. Those structures would pay.
Well, you've already hit on the sore spot that I've been barking about for two years. We got this mixed-use ordinance, but we don't have the teeth to make them build two or more components in the mixed-use. How many times have we had these guys come in here and use mixed-use as an excuse to build a bunch of townhouses? And nothing else.
Well, like I said...
When I signed on with this thing in 2012, I was under the impression that they would have to have, what we were sold on, actually sold on, was preventing the developers from having to come back and pay another fee to develop another piece of property. What the whole thing sold to me was that they pay one fee to be in mixed-use, and I was under the understanding that they would build two components, and we've let this slide. That's, that's what I want fixed in this thing. It's mandatory, at least two of these components, all the time. And quit using this excuse of mixed-use to build one thing.
So, for clarification, when you say two components, you would mean a residential component?
Residential, commercial, or whatever the, whatever, how many components? I'm understanding it's five different things?
Well, there are five different districts.
Right. So how many components in these districts? Townhouses, you've listed townhouses, you list commercial, you list single family homes, and whatever. I would like to have this thing specifically worded so that you have to build two of these things, not just one, and call it mixed-use, because it's not mixed-use.
Unoccupied or occupied?
Occupied or unoccupied? We're going to get the real estate taxes off, and I can't see a man building a million-dollar building and sits there and rots away because he's going to ruin his whole development. But I understand what Howard's talking about.
Well, I, I have, I mean, respectfully disagree. Look, look around the county. There's, there's, there's quite a few of those that sit in vacant, that, that haven't, haven't got any businesses in them, and we are losing money on those.
We're losing sales tax.
They're paying, they're paying their personal property tax, but we're losing business tax, we're losing sales tax, losing employment, there's a pile of money there that, that we're not getting while they set vacant. And, and some of these places is right at off and leave it. Now, I just, I just think that if there's, if there's a way, and if it's possible, we ought to be able to least slow, slow those things down, those, those occupied. Now, I don't know whether we can do that or not.
I agree with what you just said, but I don't know whether we can make them do that or not.
I, I don't know.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? So, the other issue is density requirements. So the current MU ordinance does not have any density requirements, and so implementing a density requirement would certainly reduce the number of units on projects. So I, I hear a couple of different things. One is the residential components coming along prior to the commercial. I just have a question, I guess, is anyone concerned or have concerns about the number of units associated with these projects? Does that raise a question for anybody?
Isn't that what the developer will propose in their package, is their density calculations? As part of an MU development?
They will let you know what the density is going to be ultimately, but there's no cap. So we don't say your density can be capped at eighteen units per acre, or anything at that point.
But, but when they submit a package, they provide that density.
They do.
As to what they're going to build, and then we have chance, and through the review process, opportunities to vet that.
That is correct, and we point that out each time, the density requirement, and if there are any triggers related to when commercial components would come on, how much commercial development would be associated with that case. And there have been a couple instances that it's been a little different in each. So in the New Post project, as an example, they committed to a specific amount of acreage that would be a commercial component. In the Jackson Village case, they committed to a square footage at, at a trigger. So New Post is a acreage commitment, the Jackson Village project is a unit commitment. So each case is evaluated on its own merit, so there's some flexibility there, and that is, you know, clearly up to the board and the planning commission whether to accept or reject an application as, as presented.
Yeah, but that is the intent, if I understand the mixed-use strategy or, or theory is, that is what the developer proposes in their mixed-use package based off these different districts that we have. And through the review process, we vet all of those different, like, density, and whether it's square footage or acreage or whatever it is, as part of their package.
That's correct. So continuing on, the limited detail in a generalized development plan, currently there are no, or a lot of detail. We have the land bay and conceptual, conceptual street layouts have been unacceptable with language that allows for movement of the project components within the land bays that have the appropriate sub-district. So essentially, if you have a plan that has multiple sub-districts, you could move uses around within those sub-districts as you see fit as a developer. So there are ways to make these projects a little bit more concrete and be what the developer says they're going to be when they present a case to the board of the planning commission. So right now, we have a, a very flexible ordinance, and I think that was kind of the intent when it was adopted, so. So the other side of that flexibility is that there's a little certainty on how the project will develop in the land bays. What is certain with the current MU ordinances are the bulk requirements, the setbacks, the lot widths, the building heights. And so those were implemented in the ordinance, so to kind of help the physical form. Now, when our ordinance was adopted, there were some amendments to those physical forms, and, and our ordinance has larger setbacks in instances. We have a, a minimum and a maximum setback, where many mixed-use ordinances don't have such a large maximum setback. It's a little bit less. So if you reduce that allowable setback, you essentially force those projects closer to the street, and then, you know, create more of that village-style feel that, that I think is the intent there. So like I said, there are options for increasing the level of detail. These include GDPs that have preliminary plat level of detail, which would be extremely specific, the requirement for pattern books or guidelines, or even ordinance amendments that detail what these projects will ultimately have to be when they are constructed. And in the ordinances that I gave you to look at, those are some examples, the Hanover, the Stafford, and even the King George have some very specific requirements within the ordinance of what these mixed-use projects have to be when they are presented in those communities. So, and I will tell you, I had a conversation today with the consultant who put together the King George ordinance, and he said they looked at our Spotsylvania Courthouse Village and kind of used that as a model of what they were trying to accomplish. So, just as, I guess, kudos to that developer. But I would, I also responded to him that, under our current, that project was approved well before this ordinance was adopted, and that under this current ordinance, he would have a lot more flexibility than the prior approver gave, and we're fortunate that this developer has a clear vision of what they're trying to accomplish. So in terms of language and clarity, the MU district language needs to be updated to be consistent with the code of Virginia, and to be clear that a request shall have two types of uses. The second concern is the use of the MU district as an infield district. As noted earlier, the purpose and intent of the district notes that infield and redevelopment are appropriate uses for the district. However, Mr. Thompson especially has expressed concerns that this is not appropriate in the MU district. We do have alternative zoning districts that may be appropriate for smaller type developments and potentially infield. Now, if we were going to use some of those districts, we would have to make some amendments to those districts, because they currently have restrictions on ratios in some of them, they have open space requirements that are mandatory as the density increases. So we would have to make some amendments to those districts to allow, to allow them to be used for infield projects, so.
As a matter of a technicality, if a package came in that only had one use, it wouldn't be a mixed-use proposal then.
That is correct.
So by definition, it has to have at least two.
That is correct. Yes, sir. So mixed-use zonings, examples, like I said, in Hanover, they, their purpose and intent is very similar to ours. Theirs is to encourage large-scale development as a means of creating quality of living, including walkability through unified planning and building operations. And I won't read the entire purpose, but it, it mirrors ours in some ways. Currently, Hanover does not have a project in that county that is approved using their mixed-use ordinance. They have one that is being considered right now by the planning commission, but they don't have one that has been approved, so they don't have any experience yet actually implementing their ordinance. So we'll kind of wait and see how that plays out for them. But they do have a minimum size for the district, which is twenty acres, and they do have a requirement that at least thirty-five percent of the project contain commercial uses. And, and they are kind of using the triggers as well for their project. And they do have a density of fifteen units, and one area has a max density of eight units per acre, so. So in Stafford, they use the traditional neighborhood development ordinance to provide areas with, suitable for densely development, dense development with pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods with their mixed uses, housing types, lot sizes, prices. Their district size minimum is forty acres, with a maximum density of eighteen units per acre. And I can tell you, the Stafford ordinance is extremely complicated to use. I, I gave you a snippet of it, but I can tell you, there are at least five more sections in their code that you have to use in conjunction with what I gave you. So I didn't think you wanted to be inundated with those additional five sections, but it, I had a probably thirty-five or forty-minute conversation with the staff. It talks about how to use their ordinance, and you'll see what I gave you, it has transect zones in it, and essentially, each one of those transect zones has a different level and different requirements. So it's a pretty complicated document to, to get through. But like I said, it does, you know, set density, and it does have its size requirement.
I can't follow their landscaping standards, so...
Yeah, it was, it was, it was fun. The King George ordinance, which you also have, which was just adopted, and I would tell you, theirs, their ordinance was limited in scope as to where it can be. It can only be used in their courthouse district, and, you know, they had the intent of allowing single-family development, but they have two density requirements in their ordinance. So their overall density is eighteen units per acre at, at their max, but then if you're going to do single-family detached units, then your max density is five units per acre. So they set a different standard for single-family detached versus multifamily, which is an interesting concept. And so they also have a requirement of at least thirty percent of it be commercial development in that, in their ordinance. So some of our observations, as we have used this, when it was adopted, it was done so with the intent and understanding that this district would provide flexibility and allow the market to dictate timing of the elements of the project. The approved cases that we have so far all have provisions, well, not all of them, but most have provisions, that allow the uses to move anywhere in the project with the appropriate MU classification. As staff has reviewed zoning applications and begun to review site plans for approved MU projects, the following list represents items that we have observed that could be addressed with some tweaks to allow clarity to the development community and citizens as projects come forward. These include, a couple of these items can be addressed with amendments to the ordinance, and some can't because they are policy-driven. But as noted, there is limited detail in the GDPs. If a portion of the project are sold to different entities, there is no provision that require that they have consistent design elements or be in the land bays, as noted on the GDP, and developers are using the MU classification because it allows... And developers are using the MU classification because it allows more density and the limited open space requirement. So, should there be an acreage minimum is another question that we can raise. And so, essentially, what happens is, like I noted, let's take Jackson Village, for instance. If that project gets sold off and someone with a different vision comes along, they can develop that project anywhere they see fit, as long as the uses fit in those specific land bases. And like I said, there are ways for us to address that. That can be done through ordinance requirements, that can be done through the, through what we require for submission of applications. So, that is clearly up to the commission and the board as to what level of detail we want to see with these applications come along. So, kind of summing up here, the question is kind of should provisions be added to require greater detail? Should additional information be added to the GDP? And finally, should we add definitions into the district to make it clear and easy for engineers to design projects? You know, some of these things are listed, have noted before, but they're not exhaustive. So, we have a number of options that we can choose to go. Kind of concludes my remarks, and I would open it up to you all for additional discussion.
Yeah, I have a few comments. What I like about the mixed-use concept is it provides a lot of flexibility for a developer to come in and provide a development where people can work where they live, live where they work, enjoy all the great things about this county we live in without necessarily having to jump into their vehicle and traveling to Northern Virginia. So, I really like the concept of the mixed-use development. I'm less inclined to endorse more restrictive language. I want to see what developers have in mind, what they want to do. I also support the fact that it believes strongly that it is market-driven. And to me, there has to be flexibility within our ordinance to provide for that. I also think it's incumbent upon us as planning commissioners in Spotsylvania County that when we look at the comprehensive plan, we look at these mixed-use developments with that in mind. I think what the planning commission is struggling with, what I struggle with, is what my colleagues are talking about, is the out-of-phase development of these things, which is very concerning to me because I think it defeats the purpose. If I recommend one thing, it's how we tighten that up. I also am concerned about what you raised, Leon, is if a section, a bay is sold off, what is our recourse if they come in with something totally different with a rezoning package that is not necessarily in compliance with the original concept of the mixed-use development? I'm unsure about that, if that's even something that we can consider or how that would work. I just don't know the, you know, the mechanics of that. And then, I'm very interested to, perhaps we have a public hearing on this, to get feedback from those doing mixed-use developments on what works, what doesn't work. And I'd be very interested to see what folks have to say that are doing these developments. But again, my main concern is, is that, you know, far too often, you know, I share the concern is that, you know, the trigger points to me are out of whack. They need to be more in alignment with the overall concept of the mixed-use development. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you they have to be developed, these different types of uses within a mixed-use development have to be done concurrently. But, you know, it is a concern and for the very reasons my colleagues are stating, so. Any other questions or comments from Leon at this point? Yes?
Yeah, so, I mean, I just see it as, I like the mixed-use concept because I think it encourages the right kind of, the vision is there. What we just have to be careful of is that whole, like you just said, the accountability. And as a county and as a country, I think that's kind of where we're at. Like, we're trying to find the new commercial because so many of us are buying things online and things like that. And I just don't, when we look at a case, you know, we're taking a big part of our decision-making, you know, saying yes or no is based on that commercial coming. And so, lately, that's been so slow in coming around, or it seems, appears on our side that it's coming slow. I just don't know if we could find a middle ground of that. And I think that maybe that is in like, you know, adjusting ordinance here or there, just tailoring it just a bit could really get us where we want to be. Because I think that this is the right kind of idea, we just need to help hone it in. And I do think looking at what other places are doing could help us with that. You know, I don't want to be as strict as Stafford because I think that's a little, that's way too overboard. But I think right now, our being wide open leaves us open for, it would be hard to, you know, it leaves us without a clear set. When we say, yes, we're gonna approve a case, we want some more guarantee that we're gonna actually be able to offset the costs to our citizens, you know, so.
I would just like to say, it's not mixed-use if you just use one of these components in the development. It's not mixed-use.
That's right.
So, I don't care how you want to work it out, but we got, if we're gonna call it mixed-use, it gotta have more than one use. Thank you.
Can I say something else? And like, you know, these other, as we've had mixed-use cases, if we could have some more follow-up on where it went right, where it went wrong, how long did it take to fill the commercial? That might ease some of our concerns, you know, going forward. We might be, you know, well, it took us three years. I know the, when it's market-driven, it's just market-driven. I mean, what can you say? But that might help us understand better the current state of affairs, you know, where we are.
I agree with her, if you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, that so many people now are purchasing online. I mean, it's gonna be harder and harder. I am hoping that there will be action taken that if it's delivered to a certain, you know, state locality, that taxes can be charged. We're really gonna lose out, and these developers are going to also. I mean, I don't know where that begins, I mean, where it stops. Think about it.
Go ahead, yeah.
I would say, Ms. Maddox and Ms. Carter, both, you touched on two things that the county has absolutely no control over, and those are external factors that are affecting the marketplace. I would also add anecdotally, you know, these mixed-use projects typically take a very long time to develop. And I can, just anecdotally, you know, West Broad Village in Henrico County next to Short Pump. Okay, we know how busy Short Pump is, but that project has gone through at least three developers. And it is just now fulfilling its vision when it was rezoned back in nineteen ninety-eight. So, think about that. So, rezoned in nineteen ninety-eight, just now coming to what they had envisioned. So, you know, it is a long-term proposition oftentimes, and with the changing in the market forces and people's buying habits, we have no way of predicting how that's gonna influence the commercial. I certainly understand the concern. I have that concern as well. My bigger concern, I think, is just what the overall form looks like moving forward. No matter how long it takes to develop, can we ensure what was approved, say, in twenty nineteen and twenty thirty, whoever builds it, they're gonna build something that the future citizens know what it's gonna look like? So, I'll just offer that. And like I said, I'm open to suggestions. If you have ideas of somewhere you've been that you'd like us to investigate in ordinance, if you've traveled to some resort areas, you know, Hilton Head comes to mind. You know, they do some things that are ordinance-driven. And so, a lot of times, if we put things in the ordinance, the ultimate goal there is, is that the land use decision becomes about the land use, and then, when the developer comes along, they develop in accordance with the ordinance. So, it is kind of a balance of how strict do you go versus how much leniency do you have, so. But we can work through that. We can bring you things that are extremely tight and, you know, see how you want to walk back from that.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Leon. Thank you, Jacob, that was very good. Hearing no other comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We are running behind schedule here. Any new business at this point? Next item on the agenda is public comment. I will take comments on anything new this evening outside of the previous public hearing. The same rules apply when you come up to the podium. You'll state your name and your voting district, you'll have three minutes. If you represent an organization, I'll give you five, but when you have a yellow light, you'll have one minute left.
We have a sign-up sheet. Lou Sherman signed up first, followed by Russ Mueller.
That's fine.
Mr. Mueller is representing a group, so he should be given five minutes.
If you would state the group, please.
Good evening. My name is Russ Mueller. I reside at ten eight one nine Perrin Circle in the Livingston District. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of concerned citizens of Fawn Lake and Spotsylvania County with a renewed sense of urgency. We're asking that any planning commission hearing on the S-Power project not be held before a site plan is provided in sufficient detail that shows how they intend to fix the significant financial, environmental, and health risks we've demonstrated to you since February. As you know, there are many constituents beyond our group who flat-out oppose the project and demanding accountability. In contrast, our group has taken the high road to present you with legally-specific, well-researched, and grounded scientific evidence of the substantial risks as well as specific engineering steps that can be taken to mitigate them. Last Tuesday, you all were handed our most recent list of conditions that were demanding be included in the special use permit. Without them, all county residents stand to lose and most immediately may face tax increases because of infrastructure and other costs. Last Tuesday, you were to streamline all this process ahead. Without demanding a detailed site plan before a staff report is delivered is, in our opinion, the height of irresponsibility to the long-term health of the county and to the health and welfare of our citizenship. Please give staff and the public an opportunity to analyze the details, not just the ephemeral promises and maybes made behind closed doors. So, before a report is filed, for example, we want details that show whether undeveloped Fawn Lake property will be purchased by S-Power and its use, and details on how county water and well water will be obtained and effectively capped so that there is no harm to our wells, aquifer, and lake. In fact, forging ahead without detailed means of mitigation is pure folly. We cannot believe a word about the project after statements made to me and the State Corporation Commission have been less than forthcoming, to say the least. For example, developers said their presence would not be expanded behind, beyond the five hundred megawatts already in the SUP. However, the grid provider, PJM, has received another three hundred megawatt filing, and they're analyzing it, and S-Power will get an answer at some point here. What are we gonna do? Sit here and see that another two, three thousand acres of the county gobbled up with another three hundred megawatt farm? Good Lord, when is action going to be taken to prevent the entire county from being papered over with solar panels? We warned of this six months ago when this commission and the board took up the comprehensive plan. We asked then for provisions that would limit projects from being positioned within thirty to forty miles from the last one, and that there be a limit on the total land in the county converted to solar. This project alone would already gobble up about two-point-five percent of county land. So, how many more of these mega projects are you willing to stomach before taking action on the comprehensive plan to limit what we see here as total proliferation without reason? For months, we've been warning about the environmental, financial risks of the project. If it goes badly, a thinly-financed LLC could walk away and stick the county with forty to fifty million dollars of unfunded liability to deconstruct a potentially toxic waste dump. You have our recommendations to prevent this. I think everyone in the county should wake up and wise up about the substantial risks of the project, six times the size of Lake Anna Nuclear Power Plant. We ask, we urge, we plead you, director's staff, to include our recommended conditions to mitigate all of these substantial risks.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lou Sherman. I'm a resident of the Livingston District. I wish to refer you to the documents submitted to you on September twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen by the Concerned Citizens.
Are you a member of the Concerned Citizens group?
Yes, I am.
I'm sorry, I can't allow you to speak. He took your time. Anybody else?
Dave Hammond signed up, followed by Sean Fogarty.
Are you a member of the, are you a member of the group, the Concerned Citizens group? Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't allow you to speak. Anybody else?
Is Sean Fogarty a part of the group? And then, Richard Janelle.
Anybody wish to speak that's not part of the group? The issue is, is that you had a speaker that represented the group. We allowed him five minutes, and per that, he's, you know, taking your time, so. Anybody else? Yeah, yes, sir. That's fine, yeah. Anybody else wishes to speak on anything other than what we've heard this evening? Are you a member of the Concerned Citizens group?
No.
Okay, you'll have three minutes.
All right, my name is Michael O'Beir, living one-one-two-oh-one, Chancemeadows Lane. I started about it like you last night. I remember the first Board of Supervisors meeting that I went to in oh-four. They had a young guy, Board of Supervisor. He said, they were voting on the Marshall-Carter Act. He said, it's not my fault that the residents of Spotsylvania County can't afford to live here. Well, I thought about it last night after the meeting in S-Power. Well, things are voted through with the SUP, with the concerns that we've had raised already. If it goes through that way, it is y'all's fault that I won't be able to live in Spotsylvania County. It's, you know, because there's no sense in what they're doing. They're taking every bit of the heritage we've had in Spotsylvania and throwing it out the window. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anyone else wish to speak this evening? All right, thank you very much. We'll close the public comment part of the agenda. Any other issues we wish to discuss? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.